Okay, this is the Board of Directors meeting, regular meetings, first one for 2023, third week of the month, and so we have on the Finance Committee Black Hertzberg and on the policy Rachel Larson and Shakinger. So we'll call the meeting to order. We have a quorum of four. We are missing tonight Joni and Jade and Al, but the rest of us are here, and so we'll be able to make some decisions. Item number, so we call the meeting to order, and first thing here is it's a public forum, so in accordance with Policy 213, public participation is recognized and is important that citizens contribute and have the availability of the meeting here. And so the question is, has anyone asked to present tonight? No one has, so we'll read the rest of that, and we'll go on to item C, the approval of the agenda. I did want to mention that it's been requested that we table Action Item E2, which is approval of a BMS service plan contract proposal. What that has to do is a control system for the high school and middle school HVAC system, if that makes any sense. And Brian and Jenny has, and Mike has decided they'd like to get a little bit of information before they give that to the board and make sure it covers exactly what it needs to cover. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion?
Would you like to move to approve the agenda? Or do we need to make a motion to review?
Yeah, approve the agenda with the removal of it.
With the removal of item two.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Okay, so next we go to Dr. Barnett. Give it over to her on the discussion items.
Okay, I just have a couple little things that I thought you might be interested in. I wanted to show you some Medicaid funding. We, if a student is, has an IEP or is Special Education Services, we can bill Medicaid for some behavioral things that we do, so oftentimes a paraprofessional that's hired works with students that are a little bit, maybe have some behavioral needs, so we get to bill back for those. And I just wanted to show, as you can see there, on the left-hand side is kind of where we were, and we've jumped from 2021, it was in the 64,000 range. Last year, we really focused on it, so we gained $126,000. That can go straight back to paying for parent education salaries or anything related in the special education side of things. This year, we're, if you add all three of those numbers up, we're at about $53,571. So we also have a few students, a handful of students who attend schools that aren't here on our campus in some kind of specialized program, and they're able to bill Medicaid, which benefits us as well. We're still paying for their education there, so this helps pay for that. So something that has been helpful and I think just gets the district a little bit more money back.
That $53,000, that was the lower right-hand corner, is that right?
So the $53,000.
Where it says 33,000.
So if you add all three of those, so that's not the total, so that's the net for each month, but add it all together, that's $53,571, just so far.
And the number isn't because we've spent that much more, it's because we're more diligent?
We are more diligent, and we do have paraprofessionals who are coding some of it, just like you would at a doctor's office for Medicaid, so it takes a little bit of extra time, but we appreciate them doing that. So, and a lot of times what happens is the, you can bill back for a year, so sometimes we don't realize that students, there's only certain codes or diagnoses that you can bill for. So sometimes when they get that diagnoses, we can bill back a year in the rear, so then we get more money for that, so.
So this affects 2023, our fiscal year or?
It will contend, yeah, and it's money to the district, to the district, yeah. And then I just wanted to give a little point that we gained 23.7 students in our enrollment this year, so that was, that's kind of exciting. So we went up 1.8%.
That's good. That's amazing, and what do you attribute that to?
Some of it would come from, one of the variables can be the class that comes over from.
Shelby County Catholic.
Obviously, it wasn't all that, but it's probably a little bit of that, some move-ins, just, I can't say it was expected, because I'd be lying there, but in some years, you're going to have a few more kids move in, and you're going to get, once in a while, you're going to get a bigger class from Shelby County Catholic, and it was kind of probably a combination.
Is this high school kids that are coming up?
It's just all K through 12, K through 12.
Middle school, probably, is, I think, the biggest increase.
Correct.
Because they, sixth grade, they come from Shelby County after fifth grade to sixth grade to us, so. And we did have five sections, we needed five sections in kindergarten this year, last year we only had four, so there's a bigger kindergarten class.
Yeah, I had thought that we had kind of a slow declining enrollment, maybe a percent or something down, but.
Well, I mean, when they do that, they base that upon assumptions, mortality rates. Mortality rates don't take into consideration people moving into the district. And even though they try to forecast some of that, they're never going to always hit them right on the money.
Do you expect it, though, to be on a downward trend, or do you think we can?
If you go by what, you know.
The experts.
What that was forecasted, yeah.
Yeah, we would expect that there is a very slight decline, and it's very slight, but yeah, we expect that to happen.
But what have you seen over the last five years, and what do you think the next five years will be? Because that really is a crucial number for the district.
They've hit it right on the nose a couple of years, and a couple of years, we've actually gained a little.
Wow.
So, I mean, they actually, the two years, they forecasted a substantial drop, and they hit them almost right on the nose, but then we've had a couple of years that have kind of balanced that out, fortunately.
Thank you.
Well, and then these are just some pictures. I don't know if any of you were here Friday night, it was a packed house, like you could not find a parking spot, me included, even though I have my own, somebody else had it that night, so.
Al asked me if he should start making a line at the door, because he was sure that it was full in there.
The money, who takes the money, yeah, he was.
I thought he was joking, but I walked in, I thought, oh, he's serious.
Yeah, it was a packed house. So we had just a little spirit clinic, so kindergarten through fifth graders did their, did their thing, so it was kind of fun. There was lots of good pictures taken. And then we also had the middle school band performing with the high school band, so that was an extra set of people there, and we won both, I think we won all of the games that night, did we? Did we win Boys JV? I don't know why I missed that one.
I'm not sure on that, I guess.
Girls JV and Boys and Girls. So there's the basketball. I stole these from Twitter, I think, or Facebook, somebody took really good pictures. So now I just want to introduce Patrick Davis and Stephen Manis, and they have some slides to share with us, if you guys want to, do you want to stand there, or you want to stand up here maybe, and then talk to your slides?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
It's better if you're on the camera.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For who?
Yeah. All right, I'll just let you.
Well, thank you for giving us the time today. We thought it'd be a good point in the design process that we're in to come and talk to the whole board and, I guess, to the community. As we've been moving along, it's been with the smaller groups, so thanks for the time. I hope you learned something tonight. Go ahead.
Okay.
So, yeah, I haven't come and talked to everybody in quite a while, so I think first it's hurrah, we pass the bond, right? On we go, so it was a while back, but here we are, just rocking and rolling, and Andrew, who's with us also, is with the, with the design team, so, you know, De novo is acting as the construction manager on the project, so up to this point, we have been doing cost estimation and construction feasibility, just reviews of what the design team has put together, so just kind of overseeing everything and making sure that we're staying within the budget that we designed to, and that it's progressing in the way that we think it's, in the best way possible. So, go ahead, go back. And then CNBA, who's been, helped us all the way through, they were part of the team a year ago, from the assessment, through the assessment, and then the project development and the referendum support, they've been a consistent, really strong partner, and we really enjoy having them on the team, and I think they're doing a great job. KCL Engineering, same thing there, they're doing the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and technology design for the whole project. Raker Roads Engineering, they're the structural engineers, so they are mostly focused on the intermediate building, but there's a couple small pieces, I think, over here that, you know, it's like, how do we strengthen this or add this? So not too much involvement over here with them. And then Larson Engineering, they're the civil engineers doing most of what needs done on the intermediate, on the new construction, and then a couple components on this side with the secure entry at the front, they'll have a little bit there, and then with adding fire sprinkler to this building, the middle school already has it, but, yeah, so they have a little bit, just a little bit going on. But that is, the design team as a whole, that's, you know, behind the scenes, we have weekly design meetings, Andrew does a great job leading those, but we've got 20 people all working on different aspects of this, trying to get it to come together, so, yeah. So, yeah, what have we gone up to since then? So identifying the project and how to execute this thing. So the first priority, one of the first priorities we had was, what can we get done for this upcoming summer? So we identified that as one smaller project, so that'll be the first one that goes out to bid in February, so that's coming up. So that's the auditorium update, and, yep, the roofing of the high school, and then the fire sprinkler. That's what will be in that bid package, the first one that goes out here. And then the remainder of the high school, because that was going to take longer to design, we're going to bid the rest of that out in one single large package about two months later, right?
Correct.
And then the intermediate school is its own project, so that will get bid out at the same time as the high school, larger project, but its own standalone project, so. Anything to think about how we?
The remodel project, is that for this summer or?
So we're going to start construction yet this school, so our plan is to start the auditorium, the re-roofing, the sprinkler work yet this year. The rest of the high school starts about June, so still this year, but once school ends, we really start. That next phase is a lot of this building, so once the kids get out, we'll transition to what we're calling Phase 1B, which we'll show a phase in plan here in a second.
Yeah, well, we have a nice little colored diagram that'll say how we're kind of going to move through the building over the next two years for construction, so, yeah. And if you want to speak to it, Andrew is here, and his whole team was here since 8:00 AM this morning, doing focus group meetings with the different users within the district, and what is this, your third or fourth time that you've gone through that iteration?
Yeah, so we've had, yeah, probably three or four different meetings, and we try to, we try to get smaller groups so that we're hitting at least the admin and the teachers and getting input from every possible voice, and so today was really listening to all their past ideas and what they've told us, and we put together a few ideas, and we showed it to them and said, is this aligning with your vision? What do we need to tweak here or there? And so we think we're in a really good spot and have a lot of the, it's been in part because of so many great voices to help us out.
They really do listen, and then, and then you see the next design, it's like, yep, I didn't know that that's what we wanted, but that's what, that is what we were asking for, so.
Keep going, progress update?
Yeah.
Keep going, okay.
All right.
Oh, that's exactly.
This really breaks down what we just talked about. The issuance, what we're calling those are the three separate projects. Issuements number one is this first project we're starting this year, so that's the smallest of the three bid packages, auditorium, re-roofing, fire sprinkler. Number two is the rest of the high school, and then issuance three is the intermediate school as an entire build. What you'll see under there is really the next milestone for each phase. Construction documents are complete for issuance number one here yet this month. On that same day, we complete what we're calling the design development phase for the other two projects, so most of the high school and all the intermediate. And the design development stage really is where we dialed in on, we started to talk about materials, we started to get an idea on finishes, we showed you a more complete design, the renderings look like a school, a lot of what CNBA showed today is more of a refined design, but not all the way to a set of bidding documents, that's the construction documents, where every little detail is outlined, which we will have for our first bid package here yet this month. This is going to be hard to read, however, this is just an effort we go through just with the, what we're calling, I guess, a design and pre-con schedule. So this is, this is broken down in two sections, one being this first bid date, so the small project is what you see towards the top, the bottom section is bids, bid packages two and three, so from a schedule perspective, they're all in the same bucket, just two whole separate bid packages, but we have various line items highlighted in here, but this really takes us through the formal bidding process from the notice to bidders, to a notice of public hearing, to the special board meeting for approval. This gets us to a successful bid date, where we've received the bids, we've done our job and due diligence in getting a package together that, you know, we can move forward with, and this is how we get to our first construction day, is the schedule here. But what we have going from now until that point is a lot of the budget estimating, looking at schedule constraints, looking at materials that are being proposed, find out what's got the longest lead time, if it's hugely critical for a certain phase, all of that work in defining those details happens between now and really the big project bid day. And then construction starts.
What's that first column of dates, you know, so many days?
This is a duration column.
195 days.
That's the start date, and this would be the end date of each line item. We can share this on a clearer form.
I'll get that to you, Joe, yeah, I have that form, we can get it too.
Stephen, it's probably time to point out there is two dates on there that are very important, the ones in yellow.
Yeah, the dates in yellow right here are, well, we're considering special board meetings. You know, our goal for convenience factor would be that if these dates would line up with an existing board meeting, but based on the schedule and the allotted times for some of these activities, we can't push it, we can't expedite some of these activities, because you can't rush design further than we're already expediting, and we don't want to push it back, because we're eating into schedule, and time is money, construction material costs are still up every day. So the two yellow line items are what we're considering special board meetings, we're already going to move down here, but these will be two Mondays, one in March and one in May, and the goal in those meetings are threefold. It's going to serve as our public notice, it'll serve as our bid award to the contractors who win the bid, it'll serve as the, just overall public hearing, you know, if there's any comments that we have. So it's really a one-and-done meeting to get through approvals.
So is the bid due date just right at the same day, or just?
No, the bid letting date, so we would have, what we call a bid letting date, we're going to get all of the bids in an envelope, and it's very specific on what needs to be included and how it's written. We get all of those piled up for each prime contractor, so for example, on the auditorium, we'll have a general construction trade and electrician, we'll have like the fixed seating as a separate prime, we'll have the sprinklers as a separate prime, and the roofer as a separate prime. We'll have, hopefully, a number of bids stacked up for each of those primes, and that bid letting date, we'll all sit down, whether it's this room or another room, there'll be quite a few more participants at that meeting. We'll open each one of those and read the bid out loud, so everybody can hear. After that, we need some time so we can look at those and all of the alternates and figure out what the project looks like, to then bring it back to the board to say, okay, we've read through it all, we did the math, here's what we're proposing as a project and the primes to move forward with, and then it'd be the board meetings, at that board meeting, we'd be approving those contracts.
And that gives us time to also vet those contractors, so to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, that they are responsive and responsible in their previous work.
What are those two dates, bid letting dates?
The bid letting date is March 8.
8, okay.
And May 12. Those are pretty set in stone, because we will be submitting to the paper, there's, you know, certain submissions we have to make to the local paper, and just public notice and bidder notice, we'll have those dates hardened there.
And so I understand that the Phase 1 is definitely the summer of 2023, and Phase 2?
We'll get into that.
Okay.
I think maybe next slide.
Okay. Just the two special board meetings, if you want to put those down now that we were thinking, are March 13 and May 22.
May 22.
Catherine's already got them there for you, yeah.
My schedule has the 19th on it, we're going to bump that to the Monday.
The 19th is a Friday, so we just bumped it to the 22nd. So March 13 and May 22 would be.
So this, this, you know, looks maybe a little confusing, but we'll just walk through them really quick here. We have it broken down here between high school and new build, so this is our first phase. Now granted, the roof covers more of the auditorium, but we want to be able to highlight these phases, so the roof is within this phase, along with what we're calling fire sprinkler. Now, we're obviously, we're not going to install the fire sprinkler throughout the high school within that first phase. We are going to work on bringing what we're going to need for new service into the building, we'll work on outfitting the auditorium, we're renovating with the piping and the sprinkler head, so we don't have to go back and do that, so that's why we're hiring the fire sprinkler contractor up front versus waiting, doing the work in the auditorium, then going to have to go back in and retrofit the fire sprinkler. So that's Phase 1. Phase 1B, which we would anticipate starting in the summer, construction work starting in the summer, would be this red hatch mark here and here, so it's really high school office where it currently sits through the stairwell into the media center, not quite the media center, but up to it, and then everything above that, entire second floor are in 1B. And that's anticipated to go from give or take June through the end of the first semester of next year, so that by January's class start, we have classrooms we can turn back over to the students and teachers. That then transitions into Phase 2. This is starting spring of 2024, which would be the Hall of Excellence, essentially what we're counting, I think we're targeting like the end of the asphalt season, the spring sport season, to start in here, which would include the district office, and as of right now, this, the plumbing corridor for the locker rooms. Then you move to our biggest phase, which is Phase 3. Phase 3 starts in the summer of 2024, and it's basically the rest of the first, it's the first floor balance of the high school. The middle school gym is highlighted because we are retrofitting that with a new air handler unit, so that's going to go on the roof, so really no work in the middle school gym, but in the, not in the roof, but in the mezzanine, mechanical mezzanine, and then we have the middle school media center in Phase 3. That wraps up the high school. Intermediate's a little easier, we will break ground in June, and we'll finish two and a half years later. So that one's its own phase. We do have, you know, demo occurring in the intermediate, as soon as this is open, this will come down, we have plenty to abate in demo here, and then this hatch mark right here is generally speaking, the playgrounds.
You said plenty to abate, what does abate mean?
Sorry, asbestos abate.
There is asbestos abatement to be done in there?
So there.
In that building?
Oh, yeah.
In the old intermediate, what is it, in ceilings or?
I don't know, you saw. Yeah, your typical, just like it is in high school, floor tile and some ceiling tile.
Yeah, and throughout this, and we're working with the abatement, not engineer, contractor, not, are they?
Abatement consultant.
Consultant, the abatement consultant in making sure that their phasing matches with ours, so that we're kind of moving together in sequence, so that they're far enough ahead of the actual construction trades that we're able to stay on schedule.
For every phase, yeah, so that really applies in everything you see up here.
And this is, throughout this project, the percentage of asbestos-containing material that is in the building will be dramatically decreased, so overall, it'll be, you know, a good health thing, even though it's not a, it's not a concern as it is, because nothing's disturbed right now, but it'll just help make things safer, so.
And future work, you won't have to worry about it from retrofits, renovations, technology changes, you know, a bunch of things in the ceiling, it helps that process in the future. So any questions on the phasing plan?
Okay, go ahead.
This is just a quick slide on what to expect, especially this group. We want to make sure we're providing frequent updates, staying in the weeds when we need to, staying out of them when we don't, but we would intend to have bi-weekly reports to what we're calling the board committee, so it's a billing committee made up of some of the board members and then, you know, the administrative team, and then monthly reports to the board. So, you know, we'll share some of that formatting as we approach construction, but we will be keeping this team very informed of progress, changes, anything that has to do with the project, this team will be aware of before they happen, so our goal is to be the best partner you can have on this and create that.
Is there just, I'm sure you're not thinking of it right now, but is there anything that comes to mind that you say, I want to, I've been thinking about this, I want to know this, or along the way, I need to know this? You probably don't have an answer right now, but if you do, please communicate that so that we are being a good partner back to you and giving you the information that you're asking for.
If you ever feel like you're not getting enough communication.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Is there any chance you could push up that Phase 2 bidding schedule so you could get a little earlier in the spring and concentrate on it and put less emphasis on, just a question, less emphasis on the intermediate?
It's not, we're already working on our expedited design schedule with the design team.
In the way that?
How much can you push, Andrew?
Well, in the way that they have that, their team structure.
I don't know that we can push it any farther, promise the quality design, I mean, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver on that aspect, so.
And it's not just them, you know, once they produce this next iteration of design development documents that you saw on a previous slide that come out on the 27th of this month, it's then our team's job to put a cost estimate to that, because that then tells us what we need to look at from a scope perspective to see, oh, we're way under, which would be great to hear, what scope do we need to add, or we're too far over, we need to find some buckets to cut out of, we need to start talking about priority list, you know, what falls off of the scope of work, so, you know, there are different activities that fall in there that outside the design team's control that we have to complete to make sure we're protected on bid day, that we can move forward with the project.
I take it the number for us to really to kind of look at is this variance on the very last column here, isn't it? I mean, that's the number we're hoping that you keep your thumb up, right? If I was to look at any number?
Yeah, and that's, take that with a grain of salt, we have what we're, we have what we would consider a reasonable amount, it's all based on a contingency amount. Based on our team's experience working through school construction projects, specifically renovations of existing buildings, we know there's a certain number you need to carry into construction to deal with the unknowns, because this building's going to have a lot of them. So knowing that number and reducing that from the total budget, we know what our construction amount is, so we know what the construction can be. So basically, what you're seeing there is a variance into the contingency that we think we need to carry, so we're short that amount in the contingency we think we need.
So, yeah, this is a short amount, huh?
That is showing a negative variance.
You know, I think I can speak for the board, is we look for you to bring this in under budget, and so we're really, we're hoping that quality and budget are two important things that we're looking for.
Yep, and that's what we're looking at every single day. So as part of that, as we move through design, then the goal is to identify those alternates, that's the tipping point on this, to make the project go. You know, we found its prioritization of the necessities, and then finding those low-hanging fruit that, okay, we've gotten our bids back, that's an alternate, but our base bid's below the budgeted amount, we can move forward. That's the, that's the exercise we play from now until the day.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Any questions? Well, very good.
Thank you, guys, for, thanks, Andrew, too.
Let us know if anything does come up as you look through this more, I know that was a quick summary, but we're here to answer any questions.
I just asked Jenny if you could, the building committee, I guess, is Gray, Jade, and I, and whatever committee things we need to do, if you just tell us a little bit.
Yep.
My New Year's goal is not to do. My new year's goal is not to do this anymore.
Next meeting is February 7.
I appreciate the statement.
Yep. Nope, we'll get you, we'll, we'll get you a total list, but the first one is February.
Yeah. Just a heads up, we have a meeting with the building committee next Tuesday.
Okay.
I think that's the first one.
Oh, yes, I think I saw.
You have that one and then the day long one.
That's the Zoom meeting, correct?
That is.
That's January, anybody know the date? Well, today's the.
January 24th.
Twenty-fourth.
And then February.
What's the building?
No, that's the building committee, so you don't have to worry about that one, Joe. No, wait, you and Monty are on other stuff.
A lot of other times.
But Catherine, will you help me create something like this maybe for the facility committee? We can give it to them and then we'll, because it's, it's pretty regular.
Okay, fair enough. How about, how about maybe I can see a desk?
We'll send that, yep.
I'll propose some times after the random meeting.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
All right.
Keep kicking everyone.
Sorry. Yep, thanks guys.
Kick someone maybe.
Thank you.
You stretched out.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian Patrick.
Stephen. Jim, there was one other thing on the facilities, just because we, we have added that as a ongoing agenda item is the Terragon, Terricon is the company that does the boring and they were supposed to come today, but they chose not to because it rained and it's not been a good day to come. So we do have a contract with them and this is just a scope and it doesn't necessarily need to be, it's under the threshold for being approved by the board, but we just wanted to be transparent and show you that we did it. And it is like, it basically just kind of shows where they're going to bore and what they're going to give us out of it. And its total cost is $8,500. So just that's on there if you guys are interested in that. Now, do you want to do student accolades, Jim?
Okay.
Do you want me to keep going?
Sure.
Student accolades, okay. Now Catherine, do you want to talk?
Uh, yeah. Unfortunately, Jeff is ill. He got, he didn't feel so well, so he went home today. But these are pictures from the elementary school. They had a talent show and so the upper left is one of the classes doing their talent and you can see.
This is one of our new teachers right here, Mr. Fink.
And then.
Your talent, rapping or unwrapping?
Yeah.
Cause I'm getting unwrapped.
Yeah. I'm not sure. And then I'm not sure of the name of the students in the lower left-hand corner, but he played his guitar for the talent show. And then we have our citizen of, no.
Citizen of the week.
But it's a cow.
Cow.
Citizen of the week. They have a teacher, citizen of the week sometimes too, yes. Mrs. Aaron Holt.
Yep. So she got it and they get to wear the vest and then all the students know it then. So it is a fun thing. Here, the middle schoolers, we've got a caption for those, Jenny, if you just want to go a little bit more. So the first one is Abby and Miss Stare working on math.
Okay.
And then Kristen, Audrina and Claudia preparing for another bulletin board. And I've seen it, it's really cute.
One of the things at the middle school is the students do all the bulletin boards kind of out in the hallway. So it's really, they design them, it's really neat.
And then we've got Ms. Lunsen's reading class working on James Down raining. And then here is Ms. Shimerlin's human growth development class. And that looks like race project, right? And then Gavin enjoying the Harlan newspaper in the library. So those are middle school athletes. And then Casey is here to speak about the high school ones.
I just included some different activities that have been going on through the winter season here. Bowling, made it down to a home meet for the bowling team. That was fun. I thought that was a cool picture of getting both of them bowling and she's trying to get the ball to go into a spike. You scroll down there. And then the bottom left is music class. I actually covered music class. I think he was at a professional thing. And he, and Mr. Navani had the, it was the first time I've covered a music class where they did music. I mean, usually it's a study hall when the teacher's not there. The kids ran the entire class and they held everybody accountable. They were telling each other, now you just be quiet and pay attention. You can't see him, but Kate and Melikan ran the whole class, senior. He is playing the piano there, playing the music and guiding the whole class and just did a great job. And he finished, I said, Kate, you should be a music teacher. I said, do you want to be a music teacher? And he said, yeah, that is exactly what I want to do. He said that was fun. So I thought that was great and been a busy winter season. Lots of kids involved and fun to see.
Games going on right now, so as soon as you leave here, you can just go right into the gym. Okay, okay, now I think you're ready for you, Jim.
Okay. Action items, we're up to E. And the first one, we'll turn it back over to Dr. Burnett, maybe Catherine, as far as personnel report.
Yeah, so I've got some exciting news. We've hired two teachers already for next year. A special education teacher in the elementary school and a social studies teacher here in the high school. And we've also hired an elementary teacher associate and she's new, but she's helping us kind of everywhere we need her right now. She's going to be in the high school and the elementary school, so she's really flexible and that's really great. And then we've just, we listed our openings for you, so we've got some coaching positions, a couple more teachers. We are, we've got, I believe, two interviews tomorrow, one on who on Wednesday, and are scheduling more and more and more. So I feel like, I feel pretty confident that we're ahead of the game right now and that's really great.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah. So. Any questions?
I remember you saying last year that when you went to colleges, it was pretty slim. Is it improving?
Uh, I can't say that it is or isn't, but I, I don't foresee a lot of, I mean, like when I went to Iowa State, there were, I believe there were 92 graduate, 82 graduates in 92 schools at the college. So it's still, there's still a little bit of a shortage.
Does Harlan still have some advantage because of our size and?
Um, I don't know. I feel like a lot of people who want to teach in a rural school, Harlan is a really good place for them to teach and so we're, we're getting a lot of, I feel like we're getting more applications than I thought we would get, which is really nice. So, I mean, I feel like we're, we're doing really well right now.
Do encourage it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So number two.
We gotta.
Oh, we gotta approve it, sorry.
Yes. Someone like to make any other discussion? Might as well take a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
By Greg.
Second.
Second by Al. Al, joke?
Al's immediately right there.
All those opposed, Greg? Okay. The next item is action item E2, the approval of the BMS service plan, but we tabled that. So we'll go right to action item E3, which is the approval of the Control Services Primary Operating Systems Contract. Okay.
Would you like Brian to?
Yes, could we turn that over to?
Brian, do you and Mike, you and Mike want to do some explain?
Sure. What, what this says is, and Mike again, I'm going to lean on you here every year, the technical guy on this, but we have an operating system over at high school and the middle school, which we had built this last year. And presently, we have a different operating system over at the primary building. To say the least, it's cumbersome, it's not very cost effective. I could go on and on, but it, it really kind of impedes kind of what we're trying to accomplish in getting everything on the same operating system. We really couldn't move forward with, on really pursuing this until after the bond issue passed. So we had conversations with Control Services and we were getting up to where it was the end of the year. And we were made aware that costs, cost of just the parts alone were going to be substantially increasing after the first of the year. That coupled with the fact that we would have had to phase it normally. And if we were able to financially do that all in one summer, there would be substantial cost savings. I asked them for a cost savings and honestly, they said, well, honestly, I can't tell you, but the difference between doing it one summer versus two summers was probably going to be $50,000 to $75,000. So trying to make a decision on, on long-term savings, savings on our maintenance costs, because we had the platform in, in place here already and not wanting to have two or three different operating systems, which is not cost effective, we went ahead and we, we accepted their proposal. Now upfront, I would tell you, the board, this is above $100,000, which is a procurement, procurement line in our, in our, in our board policy. It also states on our board policy, the board does have the ability to elect, to exempt certain contracts from these thresholds and procedures lined above. And we would think because this is the right thing for the district and because it is going to realize cost, a lot of substantial cost savings, and quite honestly, the real decision probably should be made on the long-term maintenance costs it would save us just having one system versus three. So I guess based upon that, we would, we would, we would hope that the board would ratify the proposal that we signed and so. Mike, did I?
Yeah, you did.
Awesome job.
I mean, we, we passed the bond issue, we're going to be building a new building, so we're going to have controls in that new building. So we would like to have one control system district wide. That's the kind of reason we did this to move forward with the bond issue as well. That way we can just tie right into what we have. We have one system.
The real, the intention was to do this anyway. What kind of, honestly pulled the string honestly was the fact that, okay, when they say just in parts alone, you're going to save $15,000 to $20,000 and if you have the ability to do the whole project financially in one summer, it's going to have you substantial cost savings. To me, it's somewhat of a no barrier.
If we wait, it's just to keep on going up the price.
I mean, just, just to give you an idea, this was actually looked at previously. And when we had the Estra five, you got to pick up, you prioritize, well, well, we actually had this, we, we actually had them take a look at this. It was $197,747. That's just about a year ago, right? Given that it's now $247. And it's not going to go down from that.
So you had mentioned you had, the parts are pretty high. In other words, you're going to have to do some repairs and buy some parts to fix, to fix it, to keep it going, more or less?
When you get, Mike, again, I'm not the expert on this, you're more of the expert. When you have a building after a certain amount of time, there's just stuff you're going to have to replace.
What this, and above and beyond that, when you're having two different operating systems,
to give you an example, if we had a problem over here and a problem over there right now, we got two different people are going to have to come out and fix it. That's two service calls. If we have a problem that, that happens now, we have one person can come out and fix both.
We can, we can actually, you know, have parts on hand, spare for the whole district, not just one building. You know, the lead time on these parts is, it's crazy right now.
And I think Jim probably actually gave a good example when we were visiting. I said, you know, one of the, one of the major things we've tried to do with our buses over the last five years is standardize. Standardize because it's cheaper. You can actually have stuff there. You're not carrying international parts, bluebird parts and Thomas parts, you're keeping one. Analogy kind of works in the same way.
I might mention that till a week ago, what a control system didn't mean a lot to me, but Mike was good enough to come in and he brought his computer and I think I made the joke that in my house, I have a control system and it's my wife because she goes and sets that thermostat, whether it's heating or cooling, it's got to be right. But I never realized in the, you know, so many square foot of building that each room has its own thermostat and has fans and has compressors, it's got boilers and cooling towers. And this schematics of all this stuff is quite a chore. You can tell what temperatures, you know, different buildings are, you can tell if fans are working. And so it's, it's a, it's a huge system. It's a big software system that controls everything. And he used the word actuators, which I didn't know what it was, but it's kind of a damper. It turns dampers on. I mentioned Joe knows a lot about this. It is business, but I, I didn't realize how huge it is to be able to set in an office and look at, you know, a whole building and see, oh, we've got a problem, you know, in this area. Otherwise you have to have a man going from room to room to room and fixing thing, thing, thing.
That's one of the disadvantages we really have in the primary right now is it's got to be manually monitored. If, if, you know, under a system, you can actually have a trigger that it lets you know when there's a problem. Okay? So if, if it got really cold over there and we don't manually monitor it and the, and the boiler literally shuts down.
It happened two weeks ago or three weeks ago. The weekend, both boilers shut down and we showed up, it was 55 degrees in the rooms, you know? This system would have notified me through email or text that the room temperature's below, you know, a set point or boilers are not functioning over there, we had no clue. It took all day to catch up.
I'd assume you've checked into the likelihood of having the same system in the new building and all.
That would be your desire and that's actually part of the reasoning for trying to get this all aligned.
Are we going to be updating what we have or kind of going with less than the most modern in the new one?
It'll be the same. The new building, we'll be able to just tie right into, you know, if.
The platform.
The new platform, yes. Then we'll be on one. Both these sides will talk to each other through the computers and it's going to be.
The brand name is Snyder.
Snyder Electric.
Snyder Electric is the brand name of the software and hardware that operates at the end of the software, is that right? And the contractor that comes up to service it and set it up and everything and put all this stuff in, their name is called Control Systems and that's what this.
Control Services.
Yeah, thank you. Control Services and that's what this $247,000 contract is for. And, and I brought it up because here's a, a lot of money and we didn't do competitive bids and, you know, so there shouldn't be reasons why. And Brian has went through those reasons and pointed out that the board policy is that we can make that decision with a goal of, you know, they've already specced the middle school and high school, which the, the control system's getting updated to Snyder and Control Systems is going to be taken care of and under the contract for this work. The same way with the new intermediary building, there'll be a new contract and it'll be The same way with the new intermediary building, there'll be a new contract and it'll be specified Snyder parts, uh, control system. So the primaries, the odd man out with parts that are in there for, they've been what, in there twelve years or so?
Twenty years. And they're failing. The controllers are failing, the actuators are failing.
So this is gonna come up real quick in December.
Is this one of those contracts where once everything's up to their standard, as long as everything works, they leave alone. But if anything fails, they come in.
We're actually, this, the, the contract we tabled, we're gonna get some more explanation on that to what this is going to cover. Cause we just need some more.
One of the other questions that Jim did ask, which was a great question, is have they can last a long, long time? Just like they told us boilers are only supposed to last twenty-five years. And we got ones that are fifty-some years here. But typically speaking, like a control system like this is gonna have a life, you know, twenty years. Is that what makes it listen?
I mean, I've been told on, you know, ten to twenty for the controllers, for the actuators, not the, not the front end.
Yeah, I'm talking about the front.
The front end, that's gonna be as long as, until it's out of date, you know.
In the front end, you're talking the hardware, the actuators, the dampers and stuff like that?
No, that's gonna be the software, yeah.
The front end is the software, okay. Software has a tendency to change anyway in twenty years, doesn't it?
Yes.
By then, they'll probably have, probably have earpiece or something.
Anybody have any other questions? Tried to explain it as well as I could. I think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
I was looking to approve Control Service Primary Operating Systems contract.
Monty, well, second?
Yep, I would second.
Motion. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries. The, the next item here, E, action item is, uh, let's see, we're down to?
First policy?
Yeah, number four, right? Approval of the Access Systems contract.
Oh, wait, I missed that one. Sorry. I'm going ahead. So this contract.
Explaining also.
Access Systems is a copier, copier system. So we have always had council, which has been really good, good for us. And it used to be a local, a local business. And now it's been sold three times and it's in Texas. So we've just had, we, we have a great, we've had a great relationship with them, but it's just getting harder and harder. So we just reached out. We asked some other districts around us, like who they're using and what they're using. And many have gone from council to access. So we had them give us a bid. They came out and did an audit just to see how many copiers we have, what do we need? And basically have given us this, this agreement, which they, it would be approximately three thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars per month. And then there's some other additional pieces based on how much you print.
If we hit the, if we hit the printing targets exactly that they have, they have, that they've picked or the parameters they've picked, which they tried to be very reasonable, there would be potential cost savings.
Yeah, so they'll just look at it. They'll look at it over a year to just see what we, what our act. I mean, and they looked at our bills and, and our service contracts from prior to see kind of what we do. But we did do some due diligence. There's, there's schools, there's other businesses around that are, have moved to access. And they all had very good things to say. So we tried to do, do, do our due diligence. This, they, they will help us buy out from our other contract. And then, you know, with the construction, what will, they know that like the offices are moving down here and we're moving over there. So we would, they would help us be strategic about when we're moving the machines. We won't have to move them. They'll do it.
I actually talked to a company that literally moved. And I mean, they don't have as many copiers as we do. But they came, they took everything down, they moved it, and they got everything online and working before they left in less than a day.
And it is, it's somewhat local. It's Des Moines and Omaha areas. But they, I mean, they gave us kind of their average call time. They can do a lot remote. They can, but, so I think they're not, they're not in Texas.
You have a problem with Texas?
No, I don't have a problem with Texas. Just a long ways away.
Did I see it involves twenty-one machines?
It does. They, yes. So they, it's district-wide. So it's like there are large machines out there. Plus, it's, it's some smaller ones that maybe were individual printers, so.
The other thing they did is they actually looked at our usage now and they kind of adjusted some of them up and some of them down a little bit too.
And one example, they elementary prints, they, they print a math workbook with this new math curriculum that they have. And we've looked at outsourcing that and it's uber-expensive. So we do it in-house. But they're gonna provide a machine that'll do that quicker, faster and save us money in the long run on that too, per copy. So, yep.
And what's the total bill on this one? Is it?
It's just that monthly.
Total's up for the year would be about forty-five thousand or something.
It's very, it's, it's comparable to exactly what we're paying now, really.
I would, I would guess we're probably gonna realize some savings, too, Jim.
Okay, discussion. Questions for Brian or Dr. Burnett? Okay.
I approve the approval of Access Systems contract.
Second from Greg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next item is the policy review schedule first reading. That's action item E5. I guess we got Larson and checking here on this besides me. So I didn't see anything particularly concerned on.
I didn't either.
Oh, checking. Takes me a little bit of catching. Okay, if there's no discussion, could we have a motion to approve the policy review schedule first reading, please?
Some move.
Some move by Monty, second. By Joe, his hand up. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next, we have action item E6, which is the policy review schedule second reading. Do we have any comments on that, Monty?
Nope, I didn't see much.
I saw one thing I thought I'd mention. It's under the student absences. A little, I guess I'm just quite a proponent for the parents being the primary people that should be raising the kids. And of course, the school has a great role in that. I just see that they've replaced the, the policy number 501.99, student absences. And so there's a little bit more verbiage there. Of course, lawyers like to add verbiage. But the one part that I, I questioned just a little bit is the student absences excused. It says, on the past policy, it says that students can be, it says, but not limited to. Principal has the primary authority to grant them. But then it says, but not limited to. But then it says, including. And that including, you know, in a way puts the principals on notice that this is the things that should fit the bill the best. So previously, they said religious observances. And now they say only funerals. And previously, they said appointments. Now they say medical appointments. Previously, they said approved activities. Now it says excused by principal. So I feel like it's taken a little bit of, making a little bit more stringent on the, on the parents for not allowing excuses. It puts a little more onus for the principal to say, uh, am I going to go outside with that including verbiage? So I thought I'd mention that to you all.
That's on the excused, on the excuse side. So then it would just be, it's not that the student couldn't be absent. It would just be listed as an excuse probably. So, yep, okay, okay.
So I guess I don't know if any of you feel we should leave it. The new policy, the new policy comes in from the Iowa Association of School Boards. And it replaces the old one, which has struck out. Is that right, Catherine?
Yes.
And so if you all are good with that, that's fine. But I thought I'd mention it at least. Any thoughts about that?
Are you recommending that we table this and discuss it further before we, we accept the second reading? Cause once we accept the second reading, that's, that's where it's at. But if I'm not mistaken, we can go back and, and address any policy at any time, can we?
Oh, sure.
If we choose to. So that could be something that we, if we feel strongly about, we could get a, you know, spend some time discussing it. At a future point.
Okay, would that be?
I think we could table that before those changes.
Just table all of them?
Table just this one policy here?
Five oh one. Just, yes, nine nine. Five oh one point nine nine. Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion to approve the policy review schedule second reading, except for five oh one point nine nine, which we'll table at this time?
Some move.
So moved by Joe and seconded by Monty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, nay? Okay, now we're to the consent agenda, item number seven. And to see if anyone has any questions on the consent agenda.
Well, I was on financial with that. And I just had a couple of questions for John and Dr. [inaudible]. You don't seem to have it all too strong.
Yes, he does.
The one thing I'll point out on the repeat card, which Jenny did notice, is there is two lines there for.
Subway.
Subway, which they are both, are actually the students for times when we had kids going to competition. We could have combined them. We didn't, but they're both correct.
The Boncel TV fifty-three thousand.
Those are major on the walkie-talkie system.
Is that working out good?
They're using them, yeah. You, you, I know they do it at elementary too.
Oh, Casey never answers when I call them.
You got an elementary line and they're.
Oh, that's kind of comical just to listen to it.
I always like your comments on, I guess it's the, the November twenty, two thousand twenty-two Treasury Report I found. It says, "Normal month with average revenues and expenditures for the month." Says a lot.
That's one report I actually like doing.
Lot of numbers on there. Any other discussion or questions about that? So we're on consent agenda.
I approve the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Joe. Want a second on that?
Second.
Second by Greg. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay, lastly, we have, I think, the adjournment. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Greg's chair.
Some move. Second. Second by Greg. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Thank you very much, everybody.